So, good evening and welcome to a public hearing on Article Two. Vote to change its road commissioner function from two elected road commissioners' positions to one appointed road commissioner, public works superintendent position. To be appointed by the Board of Selectmen and having a term of three years with said change to be phased in as follows. The newly appointed road commissioner, public works superintendent, shall oversee the northern part of town effective upon the 2013 annual town meeting, and shall oversee the entire town effective upon the 2015 annual town meeting, when the term of the elected road commissioner for the southern part of town expires or immediately in the event that the office becomes vacant prior to the expiration of said term. Now, a couple of housekeeping rules. Direct your questions to the board. Anybody that wants to speak, come up and introduce yourself in the microphone, and we'll answer the questions if you can't. If we can, if we can't, we have Bruce Nato here, who's our town accountant, and Jason Howe from Bergen and Parkinson, who is our town attorney. These folks have brought this question forward to the selectmen, so we asked them to be here to present to you. We'll have them present first, and then we'll open up the floor. Okay? Bruce?
Yes, good evening. My name is Bruce Nato. I'm with RHR Smith &amp; Company. I've been doing the audit for the town for the last couple of years. From my perspective through the years, as towns evolve and get bigger, what we've seen is towns that have appointed positions, or elected positions, have evolved to appointed positions. And the reasoning for that is several, and they go with perspectives from the taxpayer's perspective, and then from the management perspective of the town. One thing to realize is that things have changed in the town of Acton, just like they have in a lot of municipalities across the state of Maine in the past fifteen years. Things have become much more cumbersome, much more complicated. Also, the town of Acton isn't a small town from the perspective that it was a few years ago. It's a multimillion dollar operation. An appointed position as opposed to elected, from a taxpayer perspective, what we've found through the years, the feedback that we've gotten, is it's brought the feeling to some taxpayers of better accountability. If there's concerns about the specific function or operation of an elected office, if it's appointed, a taxpayer is able to go to the board at a board meeting, have it put on a meeting schedule and an agenda item, and discuss more readily than if they are saying, "Well, the person's elected," where they only have really one person to go to and say, "Well, I'm concerned about this or that and the way the operation is running." Also, it's easier to have the accountability from the budgetary perspective. Here in Acton, you have a relatively, not the most common thing that we would see, where you have two different, you have two sides of towns with two different road commissioners. So, with one overall person overseeing the public works operation, you get more uniformity as far as the budget and as far as the processes that are being implemented. From a management perspective, uniformity is something that you gain from having an appointed versus an elected position. The elected position is elected, but any of the employees that the elected position oversees are town employees. And in today's world, employment has a whole host of hurdles and pitfalls and things that are there that you have to be aware of, that you need to take proper steps and proper procedures to help insulate yourself from not only criticism, but also possible litigation, from the hiring process, that you're consistent in how you advertise and how you interview people, also from the perspective of how personnel policies, which are usually uniform across a town, are implemented and done. So, you want to have a consistency as far as holiday schedule, as far as understanding as far as when overtime would come in. You want to have a uniformity schedule as far as are they having annual reviews? Are there certain things that they have to sign as far as confidentiality? Are there other aspects of things that need to be done periodically as far as training? Those are things that when you have an appointed position, from a management perspective, you're able to better bring a uniformity and a consistency to a town, as opposed to when you have an elected position. It's harder to gain that uniformity. From the process, I think it makes it easier, especially where you have two public works or road commissioners, to bring something of a consistency. Now, you'd be able to say, "All right, you have a budget, but it's an overall town budget." So, as things develop across the town, if there's an issue with one particular area or another particular area, roads or something, the consistency can be used to apply to troubleshoot that area in particular. Again, from implementation standpoint, if, from a budget perspective, you say, "Well, I come from the city of Auburn. They implemented this new process as far as when they would do the plowing to try to save money." So, you know, in Auburn's case, when they're able to do that across the city and saying, "All right, these are considered secondary roads. This is when they're going to have their plowing done. These are considered primary roads. This is when they're going to have their plowing done." You're not able to really do that as well when you have an elected position. And then, especially, we have elected positions over two sides of the town. You could have some discrepancies in how that's done. The other perspective, too, is you have, from process, if you were in a situation where you may be getting some grants, if you had some situations where you had a storm and you were getting FEMA grants, there are certain aspects of those that it certainly behooves you to have a consistent policy and practices in place when you do that type of administration. And that sometimes can be harder to do if you have elected positions as opposed to appointed, which if you have appointed, you can say, "Well, these are the policies and procedures that are being implemented at the town office, and this is how things are going to be done." I have yet to see someone go from elected to appointed, back to elected. It seems that the evolution has always been going from elected to appointed, and they seem to have stayed there. And again, I think in the case of Acton, you're evolving. You're getting bigger and things. You know, this is probably part of the journey as you go forward. It seems to have, from the towns that we've seen this implemented, it seems to have, after the initial anxiety, to have an overall benefit for the town, for the operation, because it's more of a consistent and uniform process and procedures and things that they have. Pretty much, from my perspective, what we've seen.
How many towns that you, do you handle that have gone this way?
Well, a number of them have already have had it for a number of years, but probably in the last five years, I've probably had three that have gone from appointed to, I mean elected to appointed.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason?
Sure. So, I would echo a lot of those points. I mean, from our perspective as council for the town, our concerns are liability. Liability plays out in terms of cost to taxpayer. So, if there are larger liabilities and there is, in fact, a realization of the liability and the town is sued, it can mean hundreds of thousands or millions in damages, depending on what the type of liability is. Having one cohesive management structure, somebody who runs both sides, or somebody who's accountable to the board, is the type of management structure where you can implement the policies that were mentioned earlier, HR policies, safety policies, the rest, insurance coverages that would run through the town. You also have the protection of a variety of statutory acts that limit liability for the town. All of those are basically cost-saving measures on the big risk level. So, if you look at it from that perspective, you're trying to mitigate and limit the risk. On the management side, there's really something to be said about having an accountability to the board. I mean, you're not losing the election of, well, you are to an extent losing the election of the individuals as the two road maintenance folks, but really, that falls to the election of the people that you have on this spot. So that if you have issues, rather than taking your issue to an individual road commissioner, you take it to the board. The board can then address it the same way that a president or a CEO of a company would. So, if there are public issues or concerns with either performance or areas that are in need of improvement, you have recourse. Right now, you don't. You'd have to wait three years and reelect somebody else. In the type of setup that this would authorize, you could come to the Board of Selectmen at any meeting and ask to be on the agenda and say, "Look, we have a really serious issue here. There was a problem," whatever it may be. Help address it. And that's what your public officials are here to do. In the situation that you have right now, if that one individual chooses not to take your concerns into account, your only recourse is to wait the three years until the election, and then it's whether or not you want to elect them. I think from our perspective, the biggest concern was looking at liabilities and the management. You know, obviously, you've heard about the financial side. It's more a matter of accountability to the board and managing in the way that you would manage employees, rather than trying to manage, or the lack of management for an elected official. There's just, as an elected official, there isn't the oversight that you have when you have an employee. Comes down to control and oversight.
Thank you. All right. Before we open the floor, I just want everybody to stay on track with the question. This is not about individuals. This is about the road commissioner position. So, that's all we're going to discuss tonight. We're not going to talk about anybody individually. If you do, I'll ask you to leave, because that's not what we're here for tonight. So, if anybody would like to come up and ask any questions, come on now.
It's badly privileged. I think that I've been denied my voting privilege. I don't like the idea of appointing someone to any position. I like to have a voice in what's being done.
Okay. We went through the same process five or six years ago with the town clerk and the treasurer. They were both elected people, and the town voted to change that position, and it's made a big difference in the, in running both of those offices by hiring somebody as opposed to voting for somebody, as far as what's happened in that office since the elected, I mean, the appointed people were in there. We got our license plates back. We got our registration for ski mobiles and four-wheelers and things like that. We couldn't offer those services before because the office wasn't run the way the state wanted to be, to run. Once those positions were filled by appointed people, we got all of those benefits back to the town, which not only increased, had a better job for the taxpayers, but increased the money that came into the town once that was done.
Okay, that's for the office. This is a little different, getting out there in charge of the roads, and I just think it's a position that should not be appointed. It's almost, in my mind, it seems political, and I just think it should be a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary Stanton. I just wanted to ask, you said we'd have to wait three years in order to get, you know, to the next election, to get someone out, but isn't there something called recall that the body could do?
Sure.
Okay, so we can get rid of someone?
There are, yeah, there are quicker processes, but those have, you know, minimum votes. You have to get out a certain percentage of the numbers we voted in the last election. So, but yeah.
But I really feel we should be having, we should have had a public hearing that discussed what to do with the road commissioner. I think, Barbara, then, we could have had a voice. I think, and when I moved here, I was like, "What do you mean, there's two road commissioners?" And I didn't understand it, and no one really gave me a good explanation, except the town was pretty big and it was just easier at the time or whatever. I don't know the history of it. But I always thought, "Well, why can't we elect one road commissioner? When is that going to happen?" So, I was hoping maybe the town people would like to be able to vote and not have one appointed. There was one other point, but I lost my train of thought. All right, maybe it'll come back to me.
Hi, I'm Jack Kelly. I want to direct this to you. First of all, we've got a road committee in the town. We have a standing road committee. So, if someone has a problem with the road, they can come to us. We're an advisory committee, and we can present that to the chairman. Also, I've done a little bit of research. A town up in the Lewis Norby area were going to do this, I guess, a year or two ago, and they were figuring the salary would be between $27,000 and $31,000 a year. You know, on top of that, is there also going to be a vehicle involved with this? So, that was a question I had. And I was going to ask you the question about the recall. We have recall petition. If someone's not doing their job, we can recall them at any time. So, I don't, you know, it's really, we don't have to wait three years. We could do it tomorrow if we wanted to.
Sure, if you have the votes, yes.
But if you could answer those questions for me.
The question concerning the committee?
Well, first of all, the amount of, what would the salary be? Also, would there be a vehicle involved? In other words, you know, is this going to be a salary, and then we're going to pay the road commissioners or whoever does the work on the road? On top of, we have a budget in the town right now for roadwork and everything. So, is this going to add another, maybe $30,000 a year, plus maybe a vehicle? We had to buy a vehicle for the sheriff that's in the town now, so, you know, that was my question.
I don't know how necessarily the town would want to proceed as far as implementation, as far as like a vehicle. I mean, at the present time, you have two road commissioners, and they're able to address their needs without a vehicle. I would think the salary or the wages, the cost may stay the same. I mean, if you have two road commissioners and you go to one, I would assume that the salary range would stay about the same.
You're still going to have the same amount of roads, so, I mean, you're going to still have the same budget.
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, is in this, is there a job description? Is there going to be a job description before the election? We're going to know how much this guy is going to get paid? What his benefits are going to be? I mean, you know, that's what I'd like to see.
Well, right now, both road commissioners are town employees, and they are paid for the hours that they work. They bill us for them, and they get a weekly check for the hours they work. So, they're already town employees, along with being elected officials. So, whatever the two salaries are for those two, those checks that they get for driving and things like that, that would be what would cost for one person instead of the two, because he'd be doing both sides of town. As far as a car or a vehicle, we have no intention of purchasing anything like that. I mean, our code enforcement officer does his job without us, you know, providing a vehicle for him.
But if you sign a contract with someone, you're going to have to come up with a dollar amount, what they're going to have for benefits? I mean, you know, this is just like giving you the okay without knowing what we're going to pay this guy?
No, we already have a policy as far as benefits. It depends on the hours that he works on whether he's eligible for medical benefits. The town had voted not to give the road commissioners medical benefits, so neither one of those have those benefits. So, the only increase over what they're getting, what the road commissioners are getting, would be the possibility that this individual be eligible for medical benefits.
Do you have a job description tonight for us?
No, we don't.
Thank you.
Until the town decides whether they want to do this or not, we didn't bother to go to other towns and ask for job descriptions until we knew that the town wanted to do this. We're just putting this question out there for you folks to decide whether you want to do it or you don't. If you do decide to do it, if it's voted for, then we will get the job description and put everything together. But as far as the cost, the cost should not be any more than it is for the two road commissioners now, except for the possibility of medical benefits.
I was just, the gentleman there was talking about taking the elected official to an appointed official. I was wondering, have you ever dealt with that in any other town?
Yes.
To me, it seems like it's, you know, elected official, if anything, it should be started at the State House or something to make them liable. You know, if you're just trying to say to make someone liable, I think both of the guys have been doing a good job. It's just that, you know, I haven't seen you say anything about the towns and what had happened. You said you had one town that it's changed, you know? I'd just like to know what, if you could give us, let us know what happened.
Well, as they progress, I mean, normally what happens is they start, the elected officials, the treasurer, tax collector, road commissioner, become appointed. Usually, they've evolved to an administrative assistant and then eventually a town manager, form of government, as the towns evolve over, you know, over a period of years.
Yeah, but to me, it seems to be the same, you know?
The same from the perspective of?
From elected to the appointed. The gentleman is doing the same job. What's the changes?
What is the change?
Yeah.
Well, the change is, when you are appointed, you are under the auspices of town policies and procedures more than you are if you were elected.
What policies would be different?
Harvey?
What policies would be different?
Policies, well, I mean, if you're elected physician, you may say, "Well, you know, as far as holidays, I don't give holidays, or I do this, or I do that. That's my choice. I'm elected as the road commissioner." But if you're appointed, then you have a uniform policy just like the other employees of the town.
That are set, that they have it, so it'd be the same, same as they have now.
No, because they're elected now, so none of the policies for employees or anything like that affect the road commissioners as elected officials.
You were just saying they might be eligible for health insurance. If he's appointed, then he's going to...
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Then he'll be eligible for holidays and everything else, such as the other employees, then?
The other employees that work. Yeah, but that's...
So, he'd be getting the whole package, then, be like the rest of the employees?
Right. They get paid holidays and then five days of sick leave or...
Yeah, sick days.
To use whatever they want to use, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they become a town employee.
A full-time employee.
Full-time employee, right. Yeah.
I thought we were coming here tonight to get information, so that we would be informed when we go to vote on the 5th of March. If we don't know what we're looking at for a salary, we don't know what the job description is, I don't honestly see how we can vote whether or not to do this. It makes no sense to me.
What happened was, the brain freeze was because it was a different train of thought. What happens is, I'm on the school committee, and we have, you know, our vote coming up in April, and I didn't understand why our public hearings and our votes couldn't be combined and be on the same day, and it's a waste of money to be doing this. So, right now, we're wasting money.
We contacted, we contacted the school board and gave them two options to have their meeting with us tonight, or their vote with us on this ballot, or to wait until June, because we had to do, we had to do this in order to have this happen this year before the election. We had to have this meeting tonight and this vote on March, because it has to be so many days before the town meeting. We did contact the school board, and they said that they would not be ready for either of those, they would not be ready for the March meeting, and they did not want to be on the June meeting, because that would be too late. So, we did try to get it to be with the school board.
Right. But, you know, for the past, I don't know, eight years, we've been doing this, you know, we have our school-town meeting in April, so it's not a surprise. This is how we operate, and you could have combined with us. And I understand the timing, because you wanted to get it before the day's end, so you had the, you know, June-town meeting. But I'm saying, there was no rush, there's no rush for this, so we could have combined the meetings.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm a little baffled by the process. And if I've missed a bunch of public hearings that you had that I wasn't aware of, then you can just tell me that I missed a bunch of stuff, and that's fine.
That was the first meeting.
Okay, so it would seem to me that if we come to this public hearing, that we should have this, the first thing we should have is the selectmen stand up and tell us why we're here and what we're doing this for. But instead, we have somebody that audits the books for the town telling us why we should be doing this? I mean, he didn't say that we had any financial issues involved in that, really. I just don't understand why the public wasn't involved in saying, "This, if you stood up and said, 'This isn't working, and it isn't working for these reasons, and we need to change it, and we'd like public input as to how we should change it,' that seems like it might be a good starting point." But for us to be facing a vote on this when we really don't even understand, some of us don't, why we're even doing this, doesn't make sense to me.
I'm Dave Winchell. I'm the District Two Road Commissioner. I did not want to speak tonight on this matter, but I feel the information here. I'm kind of offended, first of all, on the idea that you're making out that we're not doing our job effectively, because we're not full-time. Second of all, you're mistaken if you think we're going to save money by doing this. You deal with numbers all day long. I've seen what our numbers are. Right now, you've got two road commissioners right now, and their base salary, 365 days a year with no paid vacations, nothing, working for under $20,000 a year. That's what their salaries are. I was an assistant road agent for Wakefield, New Hampshire. My starting salary was over $60,000. Most of people in Acton know that, because they all get a letter on it. So, that was my, that was starting as an assistant, was over $60,000 in my medical benefits. So, if you think that we're going to benefit from this financially, you're mistaken. The liability's part of it. I don't understand where the liability's any different. Maybe on personnel issues, they could be. I believe there are other ways of taking care of that, other policies that could be voted in. Right now, with the two road commissions that you've got, you've got two people that come in, they work together on their budgets. When you're saying, I don't understand where you're coming from when you're saying continuity and formity, or whatever you want to call it, of having a consistent budget or whatever. It is whatever the town of Acton votes in. It's just our job, hired or elected, to come to the town and say, "This is what we need." So, when you're saying, "Okay, one road commissioner can designate one area better than another," well, then that's not good. Right now, we've got two guys, he's got an issue in his town. He addresses those issues. If I have an issue of mine, I address those issues. I don't understand where you're coming from here. I do understand that there is liability issues, but at the same time, you're not going to save money, because I worked for a municipality for a little while. It's a snowball effect. You start out with a hired road agent. You're going to have to find him 40 hours a week somewhere, because if not, you're going to have half this room chasing him around town, wanting to know where their $60,000 a year's going to go. Okay, after that, now you've got to put him to work. Now, you've got to hire him a buddy to ride around with him, because he needs a town truck, too. So, you just hired another employee, you just bought a town truck, now you're finding work for two guys to do for 40 hours a week, and before you know it, there's five guys in your payroll, and you've just spent all your money on five guys, and now you have to find money to put roadwork. I don't understand where your logic comes from at all.
Excuse me, Dave? 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 From, and again, I'm just looking at it from an outsider perspective. If I look at it as the whole town of Acton. So, if the whole town of Acton says, you have two elected positions now. So, like in the case of Auburn, if we had two elected people that were monitoring the roads in Auburn, and the city council said, "Well, we're going to try to save money, so we're going to do this thing where we're going to cut back on how we're plowing," that couldn't be implemented here, because unless both road commissioners were in agreement to do it uniformly.
And that's where you're mistaken, because what we've got here is, we've got a selectman board body, okay, that comes to us and says, "Okay, guys," like they've already done to us. They've already said to myself and Scott, "We need a flat budget this year, okay? Flat-lined budget." And that's what we come in with. If we come in with any more than that, they could turn around and say, "No, no, we're not going to, we're not going to put this on the, on the floor." But, you know, if you're talking about efficiency and, you know, cutting costs and that, we're already doing that, you know, because we don't have open checkbooks. So, we're, as an elected official, I know in three years, if I don't, not cut corners, but do my job efficiently, watch my numbers, and you see my numbers, you know, you see where they come in, they don't come over, and as long as my numbers stay where they are, I'll have a job in three years. But if you hire me, not, I'm just using myself as an example here, three years, I don't care, I get a job. As long as I just continue doing and keeping people happy enough, I can still continue having a job, except there's nobody there to fire me other than three people on a select board, which, you know, and it all depends who those three people are. Because in six years, we can have a whole different select board. We're going to have revolving, we can have revolving road commissioners, we can have revolving selectmen. It's just how this political atmosphere works. And when you start talking about evolving, the town of Acton hasn't grown any in population, as far as I know, in the last, I don't know, 10 years. I don't know any new houses going in. The taxes have been where they are, so, I mean, I can't see Acton evolving. And... And if we start that evolving, you know, evolving like you're saying we're going to do, boy, I don't want to see my tax bill in another five or six years, because what you're going to end up doing is, okay, now you're just, you just started your establishment of a highway department, okay? Next thing you know, okay, we need that new truck, now we need a plow truck. You know what? Anybody knows what a plow truck goes for now? I do. I was helping order one. Try $170,000, you know, for a plow truck. So, start adding all that stuff up. Right now, with having an elected road commissioner, I'll give you an example, I'm going to give everybody an example here, exactly what happens when the road commissioner oversees, and that's all he does. I know a nearby town that has contacted us many times, looking for plow trucks, because they couldn't find any, because nobody would plow for them, because they didn't have any snow last winter. So, they sold off all their trucks, they junked their trucks. Because none of those guys were tied to that job, like Scott and I are tied to this job. We have to do this job. So, if we don't, can't find guys, we go buy trucks and do the job. One way or another, we find a way to do this job. If you get down to the point where you hire a guy out, you're handcuffing this guy to use the subcontractors in this area, and then they've got control over the town official that's running that project now. Do you understand where I'm going there? You know, it, I believe right now, what we're doing is, where I can find, if it's liability issues, let's look at how we can solve those liability issues. Let's vote on policies and, and consequences to those policies. I don't see recreating a wheel here being very beneficial.
And Greg, what are the liability issues? Don't we take on those liability issues? The...
Come on up.
Sorry.
Sorry. I'm Bill Gannon. I happen to have a couple of things. I live here, but I actually work in Auburn, and I own two Burger Kings there. And there's no comparison between the city and the size of Auburn and this town. It's not even on the planet. And in Auburn, if you ask the people, the roads suck. They're terrible. They all bitch about the plowing, et cetera. Here, if you have a problem, you call Dave, if you're in that side of the town. And I've never had a time that that didn't work, that he didn't come and address whatever it was. You go to Auburn, you call your council, who calls this guy, who calls that guy, and you go nowhere. So, saying that we're getting to be a big town, don't compare us to Auburn, there's not even any comparison.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to compare you from the perspective of size.
You're comparing your job here and the size there, and it's a different world.
Just as far as implementing a policy across the town is a little harder, if you have two elected officials that are going to implement the policy as opposed to one.
It isn't possible to get anything done in Auburn, I can assure you.
I know, I live in Auburn.
It's awful.
The roads are terrible, as far as the plowing goes.
I don't want that here, and I really believe that we've had great results the way we have it. And we like voting for the people, we believe in the people we have. And so, that's really what I wanted to say, is I like having somebody that I feel I can vote for this responsible to us, that wants to be re-voted in, that's going to do a great job like we've had. And I don't think, if we come as big as Auburn, I'm moving.
Thank you.
My question was about the liability, because I heard you mention that. And as far as I understood, the majority of the liability is taken on by the road commissioners. That's why we have such a big policy.
The road commissioners have the liability for the trucks and all that, but the, every employee you hire becomes a town employee. So, we've got 24 employees, including the two road commissioners, so 22 employees in 2012, that are actual town employees, and over and above your budget, we have to pay for workman's comp, unemployment, and all that. So, you guys do have all the liability on the equipment.
Right, and whatever happens out there is our, it's our, because we've thought about that. It's a scary liability. Whatever's out there and happens, any mistakes, it's on us.
Right. But if one of your employees gets hurt, then it's on the town's workman's comp. You're covered that way. That's where the town takes over the coverage, because everybody, when you, when you hire somebody, they come to us and fill out the W-2s and all that, and they become a town employee. So, that's the liability, is the employee liability, not the equipment. We know that you pay for all that yourself, and I know what that kind of insurance costs, so.
My other, and my other thought that I just wanted to put out there is that, it kind of, Dave touched upon it, is that when these guys are getting their payroll, it's not for doing paperwork. They're not, they're not doing, it's not for doing like the, all the phone calls that they have to make, and get the numbers, and get the estimates, and all that stuff. I doubt either one of them. I know Scott doesn't, and I doubt Dave does either. They're not jotting those numbers down. The numbers that are getting jotted down, that they're getting paid for, is when they're in their trucks, when they're actually out there doing, doing their work, or when they're in their equipment, things like that. So, there's a lot that the town gets. I wouldn't want to say for free, because, I mean, we appreciate the work, and they get compensated with their trucks and things. But there's a lot that, all that administration piece that they do, that they do beyond getting out there, and they're both out in their trucks, too. So, it makes a difference.
Thank you, Holly.
Ray Lopez, rather than Acton. What I'm listening to is basically the consensus that the majority of the people that are here are not willing to give up the way this town is being run. We like the fact that we can elect two road commissioners. You look at it from the perspective of having just one appointed commissioner, and as one of the commissioners said, "Yeah, that's liable to whoever's on the board. It may make it easier, a paperwork for you guys," you know? And I, clarification-wise, you've got two salaries, are you going to combine both those salaries into the one? Therefore, where are you gaining any, any financial advantage? You know, I mean, I've seen some stuff here being presented by the commissioners. I have no problem with them. I've, at a point in time, have gone to work at 3:30 in the morning, and they were out there already, plowing. Plowing is to get through. I don't have any concerns with any of the commissioners that are here. So, I don't see how changing the way that we do it is going to be beneficial to this town. You know, you said, you know, from your standpoint in litigation, that we only had one recourse in waiting three years. That was already proven to be wrong, okay? So, my question is, what else is it that you're telling us or not telling us that's wrong, okay? If it's not broke, don't fix it, okay? It sounds to me like the majority of the people are happy with the way it is. This is what this meeting is about, to find out what the people want, right? There you go, that's what I'm hearing. Majority of the people want it to be the way that it is. We don't want it to be appointed where somebody's liking, "Oh, you know what? I like this guy better than this guy," you know? We're going to have one guy making the decisions and all the money. Well, you know what? This part of town needs this project, and it's going to be X amount of money. Right now, the way I see it set up, you've got two sections of town, and the money's split up between them, so you have two sides of town that are getting things accomplished, right? So, if I'm correct, and what I'm hearing, I would totally leave it as is.
Thank you, Rick.
I'm Norm Lambert. I'm a member of the Acton Fire and Rescue. We had an incident last week where I was driving a rescue that took me three times to go up a certain hill to assist a patient. And we got on the radio, and we asked for, for some help, snow plowing, and for, for some sand. And I don't care, well, first of all, it was Scott and his crew. Apparently, they were probably going by, they heard the call for distress, they came right over. Couple of years ago, we were on 109, called the state for some assistance, because the roads were really slick, cars are going off the road. Who shows up? Scott and Dave. State never came out, for some particular reason. And again, I'll echo Ray's words, if it ain't broken, don't fix it. We have two good people here, and it's working, and we don't want to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. If I, if I could make just a, just a quick comment, through my years of doing audits, one of the things I've really enjoyed, and I've seen, that's always amazed me, is Maine is made up of small towns, and the individuals in those small towns who take great pride in their community, just like this gentleman here who's, who's working on the rescue unit, it's like these board members volunteering, just like you guys come out here. And that's why Maine is made up of small towns, as opposed to big county government and county-run organizations. Years ago, in a small town that I was doing an audit, they had a very large expenditure for general assistance. And for the small town, then we spent, we'll say, $1,000, they spent $5,000 that year. I'm just throwing out round numbers here. So, I asked the people, the town officers, "Hey, how come, you know, you spent so much money on general assistance this year?" Well, we had someone in town that got injured, and they were a logger, and they, the board said, "Even though we don't have to pay for certain things, we're going to step up. We want to make sure that they're made okay, because they've, you know, they've gone through a tough time, they had this injury." The following year, I went back to do the audit, and I looked at the general assistance account, and they had these huge, these huge credits, these payments. The individual paid all the money back that he'd gotten from general assistance from the town. That type of stance, that backbone, is what makes Maine what it is, and...
All the county votes.
So, yeah. Yeah. So, I just, anyway, I just wanted to mention that, you know, the small-town Maine, that's what makes it what it is. Go ahead. Yep.
My name's Elaine Beck, and I have questions for the selectmen.
Sure.
And I'll just tell you what these questions are, and then perhaps the three of you can answer.
You can answer the microphone.
Okay, sorry. I'm going to ask you the questions, and then you can answer them. My first one is, does a road commissioner have to live in Acton?
No.
Okay, and will there be interviews when you, if you choose, if you choose someone?
Oh, I misunderstand. You're talking about the person that we're going to appoint?
Yes.
Yeah. Even, you don't even have to live in Acton to run for road commissioner right now. There's nothing set up in town for us to keep people from outside of town to run for the road commissioner job. So, that's no change at all. So, whoever applies for the job, who's ever best suited for the job.
Okay.
Through an interview, an interview process.
And do all three of you support this change?
What we've done is the same thing we did with the police vehicle. Something came, was brought to us by the sheriff, and we brought it to the town to ask you if this is what you want to do. We, we felt that we shouldn't just say no and see you later, and as it turned out, the town did vote, not by very much, but the town did vote to have the police cruiser. This was brought to our attention by our attorney and our auditor, so we thought it was something that we should bring forward to the floor.
So, it's not something that the three of you decided on?
It was after we were told by our attorney, you know, making the suggestions, and by, you know, and then talking to our auditor, we thought it was worthwhile to bring forward to find out whether people wanted to do it or not.
And do you think that the liabilities that the attorney spoke of are, in fact, big liabilities to the town?
Well, well, yes, I have to believe that because of what they've told us. You know, I have, there is some liability, but there's a liability in any business.
But is there a way of the town adjusting otherwise for those liabilities?
Well, that's what we were doing here, by going out to contract and separating, so that the town wasn't, you know, because the road commissioners are elected, but because of the way it's set up now, they're also employees. And then they go out and they hire all of their employees. We're not doing what municipalities are supposed to do as far as hiring. We should be advertising, we should be interviewing, but when the elected, you know, the road commissioners are elected, we've been through history, giving them permission to go out and hire whoever they want. But then those people become town employees without an interview process, a background check, or anything like that. So, that's the liability as far as employees, and the town has that liability, not the road commissioner.
So, all of the people that work for those two road commissioners are town employees?
Yes. Yeah, we had 20, 24, including the road commissioners, last year.
Do they get salaries?
They get paid weekly.
They get paid weekly?
Right. The, the road commissioners put in...
They're hourly, yes.
Hourly, part-time.
Well, they get a check weekly, yeah. They get paid hourly, yeah. And they are part-time employees.
And so, what benefits don't they, don't they get?
They don't get any benefits. They just get an hourly rate for whenever they work, whether they work winter, plowing, or summer.
So, if they're town employees, and you're afraid of a liability of those people who are out in the trucks plowing, you must have coverage for that now.
Well, we have workman's comp, and we have unemployment that we have to pay on all 24 of those employees. Every time a new employee comes in, workman's comp goes up or unemployment goes up, based on the salaries of everybody we have.
Wouldn't you have liability for accidents, or wouldn't the commissioners have some kind of liability for accidents and personal injury, and...
Yep, they have that. So, if there's a car accident and things like that, but they're also on the job, so then unemployment will kick in. So, they're entitled to benefits under the town.
Okay. And the last thing is, could each of you tell us why you would support this? Why you support this?
Again, I'm not going to say whether I support it or I'm against it. I brought it forward, because I thought it was of concern to the town, and I wanted the people to be aware of what's going on, and whether they want to change that or not. That's the only reason that I brought this forth.
Okay. And what about you, Mr. Walmsley?
Same type of thing. I mean, it's, one of our jobs is to bring things like this towards you folk, you know, to see what your feelings is on this, whether I'm for or against. I try to stay neutral on a lot of things, just to see, you know, to bring it forward.
Mr. Shields?
I don't care to tell you how I'm going to vote.
Oh, I'm not asking you how you're going to vote, I'm just asking you how you feel, do you strongly support the town making this change?
I don't strongly support, no.
Okay. And thank you, all three, for your service throughout town.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Ruma. One thing I noticed was the three-year contract, is that standard? And like any employee that you hire, would it be provisional, like for the first three months, before you...
Yeah, we'd have to go through all the personnel policies, the same as every other employee, as far as, you know, has to be here so many days before, or so many months before they get any leave, and, you know, it'd be the same as hiring for any position that is already currently a town employee.
And I assume the contract would spell out any job expectations and...
Yes, absolutely.
Mutual parting methods?
Right, exactly.
Okay. Would this be a working road commissioner? In other words, he would not be a laborer, strictly an overseer? Is that correct?
As far as, are you saying, would he be out plowing and things like that?
Right.
Yeah. Well, the thought was that we're going to be putting it out to bid, and then he would be overseeing the contractors getting, you know, making sure that the work is getting done. The thing with the bidding is, we have set prices right now for every piece of equipment that we've set up with the road commissioners over the years. We had to do some changes from the state way of doing it, because there's some equipment that they have that the state doesn't have. So, we've got this whole chart of, and you vote it in every year at town meeting.
Right.
Of what we're going to, what we will pay. So, if we go out to bid, we put it out that we will pay up to that figure for plowing, for, you know, excavator, things like that.
I assume you have...
And people will come in and hopefully bid lower in order to get the bid, so we would be saving money that way.
And I assume you have a handle on how many miles of road you plow, and where the culverts are, and when they've been replaced last, and so that you know what needs to be maintained?
Yeah, I was informed tonight that a rough estimate, or a pretty good estimate, is $7,500 per mile is what we pay right now for our roads in town.
Okay. And as you say, all the work will be put out to bid, and you'll, you know, that's where your indirect cost for, obviously, your workman's comp, because it'll just be pushed off onto the person that's doing that.
Yeah, if we lose, if we don't have those employees that are working for contractors instead of the town, we lose 22, or 24 employees. We don't have to play unemployment on anymore, we don't have to play workers' comp anymore, and we would not have to run a drug testing program in the town anymore.
Okay.
So, those are all savings.
Holly touched on this, but with the paperwork of putting things out to bid and having a phone available, and I assume a computer, fax machines to check on the price of sands and things like this, do you intend to provide him with an office space or any clerical support?
Well, yeah, he could use the office, the selectmen's office. We don't have to go out and create an office for him or anything, or get any, or him or her, and we don't have to get any equipment for this job to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to, on the, on the employees, where you were talking about the subcontract and all that, just so, just a bit of information, we're not going to save on any workman's comp or unemployment insurance or anything like that, because if I am subcontracting to you, I'm going to charge for that. So, there's not going to be any cost savings there. Actually, I think the town of Acton gets a better rate than I get as an employer myself. You're going to get a better rate than I would. So, if you're going to hire me, myself, and my... So if you're going to hire me, myself, and my crew, any good businessman would tell you, anybody in here that has employees is going to tell you that, say, I got a flagger, I pay a flagger right now roughly twelve dollars an hour, okay? Then you're, right now, you're, you're doing a workman's comp, and you're, you're doing the federal, all, all social security and all that. So you're going to take care of that, plus twelve dollars an hour. If I have to hire that employee through DW excavation, okay, I got to pay all that anyways. So you're not getting that guy for twelve dollars an hour, and you're going to get that guy now for eighteen dollars an hour by the time you're done paying taxes and everything else. It all comes out in the wash at the end, there's no saving money either way you're talking about it. One thing I wanted to clarify here was, these twenty-two employees, is like my crew, I've got two fellows that work for me that will work roughly twenty to twenty-four hours a week, they're part-timers. They only work in the summertime, and then in the wintertime, what I do is, the employees I've got either run equipment of mine, or run equipment for somebody else, which are also part-timers. So you're, you're not getting, and Scott has about the same idea, he's got his crew and this and that. So when you say twenty-two employees, you're really only talking, at a period of time, maybe five or six employees at a time, working. So, and the employee cost is just going to be shifted to the next guy. That's just how it works.
I just want to say that I feel this is a dishonest process that we're going through. I don't appreciate it when our town officials aren't straightforward with us. When you say to me that someone brought this forward, and so you wanted public input on it, that's fine, we could have this meeting, and there would be public input on it. But my understanding is, we've already scheduled a referendum vote and all on this, am I correct in that?
Yeah, we want a public vote on it.
So, I, I don't really see that, you, you know, that seems like something's not adding up here, with what you're saying.
Can I, there was the referendum set for a vote. This is a mandatory part of that process? So this is, this is public input, and the ultimate public input comes at the time of the vote, so...
I understand that, okay? What I'm saying is, if someone brought something forward, and you want to present it to the townspeople and say, is this what you want to do? Then you could have a very simple public hearing, and say, is this something you want us to follow up on and, and look into? And then you develop the whole strategy of how you're going to do it and everything else. So, we're not getting an honest story here. If you've already got a referendum scheduled on something that you didn't even know for sure if the majority of people were interested in doing.
That's the reason for the vote, to find out whether the people are...
No, you could have a public hearing, or a series of public hearings, and find out whether you would pursue a vote. Why would we put all the money into a vote? It's not, it's dishonest.
Virginia Shea. You three know more about the road commissioners, and the background, and the pros and cons of whether or not this town really should consider doing this. But you haven't shared that with any of us. Now, I don't know about other people here, but when I elect somebody for the board of selectmen, I want to hear what they're thinking. I want to hear what they have to say. I don't begrudge you that you don't want to tell people how you're going to cast a vote, but I think you haven't shared enough information tonight for people to make an objective decision. I don't think we're asking too much to say to each one of the three of you, I want to know from you the pros and cons of taking this direction, or staying as is. So...
All right. Pros and cons. You'd have one employee working for the town that would oversee the roads in the town. That employee would then be the same as any other town employee, as far as policies and requirements and things like that. Right now, we have road commissioners that are elected, but also employees. Then they go out and hire employees. All that will be done by the, by the selectmen, and a committee to elect a person from then on. And then, as, as a municipality, we really should be advertising those jobs. I mean, for us to just go and hire people and give them a job that's a town employee, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, we're actually required to do that, is right?
It's supposed to go out to bid.
Yeah.
Or out to, out to the general public, it's supposed to be advertised, if you're going to be an employee of the, of the town, so...
Tom Gore. Gentlemen, just a suggestion on moving this forward, if you, if, if you really think this is worth pursuing, then I would strongly urge you to establish a committee of the town meeting, a special committee of the town meeting, to investigate it, put together a job description, and be able to present to the people what are the advantages and disadvantages on both sides of the issue, and then bring that to the town meeting, once all those issues are before you. You need a study committee to make a big change in town government like this. An independent committee of the body, who can bring, present to the town meeting the rationale for proceeding with this. Suggestion, I think Scott had it right, we don't know what we're here for. What problem are we trying to solve? And before we can move forward intelligently, there has to be a definition of that problem, and I don't think that's been clearly presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do I, on this, the board, you were, like you were saying, this is going to be someone you're going to appoint?
Here you are.
Oh, sorry. This is going to be someone that you're going to appoint?
Right.
And everything that you've said along with it, it's going to be a non-working road commissioner?
No, I didn't say that.
Well, if you asked, put out for the job, is he going to be running the, the, either the excavator, the loader, all that? Like you have now?
The town doesn't own any equipment.
Right. So he's just going to be an overseer. So he's not actually going to, he's going to be getting paid to just, to watch someone do the work.
Well, he'll have to do all the bidding contracts, he or she will have to do all the contracts and, and oversee the bidding process.
That's what the guys are doing right now.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. And we're getting, actually, people that are both sides that are working.
I'm sorry? And both... Both of them are working.
Mm-hmm. On the job.
Yep.
And then also on the, for the workman's comp and all that?
Yeah.
If you do it, privatize it, you said that they're going to have to have it themselves?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it that the town has to also have a binder to cover all those employees on top of it, in case theirs runs out? It's the backup, so the town doesn't get sued, in case there's not enough liability insurance on the contractor?
No, any contractor we hire has to show proof of insurance, and then they add, and then they add the town on as it also insured. So then if they were to let it, their policy lapsed, the con, the town is contacted immediately to let them know that the policy lapsed, and then you just stop the work with that person.
But if it does lapse, or if there's not enough there, I've worked for a lot of big companies, and when they hire subcontractors, they also have a policy to cover them for the subcontractors. So you still have to carry insurance on those employees, plus the contractor who has them, right?
Are you talking about private employers?
Yes.
The difference between a private employer and a municipal employer is that a municipal employer has the benefit of, well, lower costs on one side for insurance because of the Main Tort Claims Act, but you also have the benefit of the Main Tort Claims Act. This actually, in many cases, prohibits actions, or stops actions, civil suits, against the town.
On a bitted, on a bitted contract?
On, doesn't matter who it is, doesn't matter who it is that's suing the town. For certain, for certain actions against the town, the town gets the benefit, the benefit of the Main Tort Claims Act. The idea being that in, in suing the town, you're just taking money from everybody's pocket in this room, if there's a successful claim against the town, so...
Hold on, just saying, you know, you put out the bid...
The state statute implements the Main Tort Claims Act. The main legislature through statute implements the Main Tort Claims Act, and that is on the books now, which is what allows you to avoid liability and reduce the cost for a municipality relative to, say, Pike Industries, who would carry astronomical coverages.
Mm-hmm.
Just for comparison.
All right, just, that's what I was trying to find out?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Lots. We've all been sitting here for an hour now, listening to these different viewpoints, and basically what I'm hearing is that the proposal from these gentlemen through the selectmen is, they want to hire someone to do what we're getting for free right now. That's the way I hear it. You want to hire somebody to do all the paperwork and administration, and you're getting that right now for free? And why in God's name should the voters be paying for something when we're getting it for free now? Doesn't make any sense, guys. Just doesn't make any sense. And as several people have said, it ain't broken, so why are we trying to fix it?
Thank you, Bill.
Uh, one, you go.
Um, well, they are, you do have salaries for the two road commissioners currently.
Um, not a set salary, they put in their hours that they drive their vehicles.
No salary right now, they're paying to drive their truck.
They get paid narrowly, a rate to drive whatever vehicle, or, or a piece of equipment. There, there is no set salary. They put in, they put in a timesheet.
Right, right now, as a road commissioner, and Scott, neither of us, as far as I know, charged for going to meetings. We charge when we go, and we meet somebody on a site that have an issue. Anytime there is an issue where we have to actually go there and do something, where we're actually, I guess, doing something. When it comes to our clerical work, and when we go and meet with a selectman, we don't get paid for that. We don't have a set salary. We get paid when we go out, when we get in our truck and we go plowing, or when I sit in an excavator, yes, there is, you know, if I'm sitting on a job site and I am supervising, there is, there is point, times when I do that, when I meet with DEP, you know, York County Soils, stuff like that, when I have to actually go out and do something like that, I do charge for that. But we don't charge for the phone calls. I don't charge for doing payrolls, which, you know, chasing the guys around for their time, guys, is always fun, you know? There's a lot of that stuff we don't charge for. You know, I, I really look at it now that I could sit back and, I bet there's fifteen to twenty hours a week of little this, a little that, I'm sure I could, I could be petty and charge for it, but I don't, because we make our money on our equipment and our time out there working. And, and it's, it's not a bad job, and I don't think anybody's complaining about our pay. What I'm complaining about, and I'm biased, you know, I'm road commissioner, I don't want to lose my job. But what I'm worried about is the idea that when you're getting a job done for, well, it's under thirty thousand, it's twenty-two, twenty-three thousand, for two guys to do sixty, roughly sixty miles of road, okay? I think that's a pretty good bargain, myself. And if we don't work, we don't get paid. You know, January, January's pretty slow. We didn't get paid, you know, until it snowed. We're getting paid now because it's snowing, you know? But, so there's, there's, there's no pros, I, I mean, I don't understand whether there'd be any pros where you hire a full-time guy. What I call that, dead weight. A guy standing around watching somebody do something. You know? That's what I call it.
Dave? If it, Dave, if it helps, you, you earned nine thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars last year.
Well, I got unpaid then.
That's your check.
[laughing] Well, I want a raise.
This kind of goes along with, if it ain't broke, why try to fix it? If you have not had any complaints, or there is not any issue with what the roads commissioners